Call a meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Amparano.
Here.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Protim Oviedo Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Tucker.
Here, um, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, of America, indivisible, with the same just as mine.
Adjustments to the agenda?
Um, Mayor, I understand there's a request to, uh, move C two, uh, to the consent agenda. And at this juncture, we haven't received any, uh, requests for public comment on that, on that item.
Okay, perfect. And do we need to?
You can vote on it.
I'd make a motion.
I got a motion in second.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Yeah, Councilmember Amparano.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Oviedo Martinez.
Yes.
And Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, City Attorney, report on closed session.
Thank you, the council met today in closed session and discussed one case of anticipated litigation. Direction was given to council, no reportable action. The council also discussed existing litigation, City of Imperial versus PCG Mayfield. Um, as written on the agenda, direction was given to council, no further report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Public comment, if you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the council jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At this time, state your name and address in the re- for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. Okay, seeing none, I do have one, um, written one for Yvonne Cordero.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, um, here to invite you to an event that, um, we've been working on in collaboration with Ivy Food Bank and Keep California Beautiful. We are plan- we are planning to do a planting or reviving of the planting beds at the Ivy Food Bank, um, and Grow Salsa, um, we're inviting you, um, Serva sends a message that she hopes to see you all there.
All right, thank you. Seeing no others, we'll move on to presentations. Um, A one, Certificate of Recognition for Noah Larios. Certificate of Recognition proudly presented to Noah Larios. The city council proudly recognizes and comments Noah Larios for his outstanding achievements in earning first place in the two hundred and eighty-five pound sixteen-and-under men's freestyle division at the twenty-twenty-five U.S. Marine Corps Junior Wrestling Nationals in Fargo, North Dakota. His triumph on the national stage not only marks a major milestone in his wrestling career, but also brings immense pride to our community. All right, Noah, would you like to please stand up and say something?
Hello, my name is Noah Larios and, uh, I'm very thankful for the recognition. Um, I'm very happy that I made it this far and it means a lot to feel recognized. And I'm also very thankful for my coaches and my family who got me up to this point. And I'm overall just very excited and I hope to do even more for the valley and the community and represent you guys much more in the future.
All right, thank you.
Noah, I watched you on Facebook, that was crazy to see. And you're only sixteen, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, you got a long way to go still, that's amazing.
Yeah.
It was, it was really, really neat to see, um, we're very, I'm very proud of you coming in, so, thank you. You did a great, great job.
If you don't mind me asking, what grade are you in?
Uh, I am a junior.
So we have two more years that we can look.
Watch.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We look forward to good things.
Thank you.
Now you could photo with them.
While they're taking this photo, I had gone and talked to his aunt and his mom. Um, I used to bowl with Noah's parents and I knew, I've, I held Noah as a baby. So just to see the age, realize you're getting older and I'm very proud of his accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Had the whole Larios family here.
Hi, Donnie Arissa.
Nice.
Yvonne, if I could ask, is this open to the public? Um, I don't know if it was mentioned, if it's open to the public, can I just put out there for anybody watching on Facebook that it's being held on September thirty or September twentieth from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty? And where can they go to get this QR code if they wanna volunteer?
Um, we'll be posting it on social media.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is A two, Voters' Choice Act. Presentation by Imperial County Register of Voters. Ms. Lindsay Dale.
Thank you. Good evening, I was so excited about a full house and then they all. Um, thank you for having me, it's very exciting to be here, um, back home. I feel like it's been a while since I've been in the chambers with a, a full meeting, so this is kind of fun and it's kind of nice not to have someone up there that I'm watching, so. Um, anyhow, my name's Lindsay Dale, Register of Voters for the County of Imperial. I'm here to tell you all about the exciting things that we're doing in our office and at the county. Um, the Voters' Choice Act is, um, it's related to, it's, it's, this, this presentation is going to show you the, the transition that we're gonna be making in Imperial County from a traditional polling site model which we are currently in to the Voters' Choice Act, which modernizes elections throughout California. Um, it was established by Senate Bill four fifty in two thousand and sixteen. And as I said, it modernizes elections by providing greater flexibility and convenience for voters. Um, there's four different aspects of the Voters' Choice Act. First aspect is the, uh, vote by mail. So every registered active voter receives a vote by mail ballot in, in the mail. Um, as you know, we are already there here in California. Um, that was, uh, through the, due to the passage of AB thirty-seven in two thousand and twenty-one. So every active registered voter will still continue to get a vote by mail ballot in the mail. Um, the second aspect is that we get secured ballot drop-off locations. This is also referred to as our ballot drop boxes. Um, we established those back in two thousand and twenty-one here in Imperial County. Again, looking towards the future, knowing that we needed to have those. Uh, we had some money, grant money available, so we decided to take advantage of that. And we installed eight, uh, ballot drop boxes throughout Imperial County. And we do have one here in Imperial at City Hall. Um, it is one of two of our drive-ups. So that is a fun, a fun fact for everyone, that's a, it's a nice convenience, especially for our senior voters um, and those with, um, ability to, um, you know, disabilities. Um, the third aspect that is required under VCA, I'll refer to Voters' Choice Act as VCA, is that all voters will be able to cast ballots at any vote center. So currently, how, um, a lot of people vote by mail, but there are a lot that still want to vote in person. Um, however, under our current traditional polling site method, you are designated a poll site that you must go to to vote in person. If you don't go to that vote, vote center, or excuse me, that poll site, um, you are required to do what we call a provisional ballot. Provisional ballots take a lot longer time for us to process, they're more difficult for the voter, a lot more time involved. So under the Voters' Choice Act, every voter will be able to go to any vote center in Imperial County, regardless of where they live, and vote, and they will be able to vote their ballot. Um, this is super exciting for us here. Um, and then the fourth aspect is it expands the in-person voting. So currently, as we have it now under the traditional polling site method, polling sites are only open on election day from seven AM to eight PM. Under the Voters' Choice Act, depending on the location, they will either be open from four days to eleven days. So three days before the election plus election day, or ten days before the election plus election day. So voters get to choose when, where, and how they vote. So there you have your flexibility and your convenience for our voters. So how do we decide how many and where we place these vote centers? Um, under California law, we have to place one vote center for every fifty thousand registered voters for eleven days, so ten days before the election plus election day. On the ten days, they'll be open for eight hours, election day seven AM to eight PM. Now, I've been here long enough that I know if we put one in Brawley, we better put one in Calexico and don't forget El Centro, right? We're very territorial here. So we are required under law to have two vote centers, we have ninety-three thousand registered voters in Imperial County. So we would be required to do two, but because of our large, um, spatial, um, area that we have in Imperial County, we felt it would be beneficial to have them in Brawley, Calexico, and El Centro. Those are our three heavily populated areas, so three vote centers, one in each city, would be open for eleven days. Um, in addition to this, we would be required to have one vote center for every ten thousand registered voters. So again, with ninety-three thousand registered voters, we would be required to have ten locations. But we've identified eleven locations, and I'm gonna read them off to you right now. Um, we would, what we are proposing is one in Calapat, Hopeville, Imperial, Westmoreland, Heber, Nyland, Salt and City, Winter Haven. And then second locations in Brawley, El Centro, and Calexico, because again, those are our heavily populated areas. Um, just by un- understanding what other counties have gone through, we know that those vote centers that are open for eleven days unfortunately will not be visited as much. People will start coming in four days before. So we wanna put additional locations in the larger cities. One of the aspects that I really love about this, again, going back to that convenience and flexibility, um, for people that wanna vote in person who are, I'm gonna use a couple of examples, firefighters. Our firefighters, my hus- my son is a firefighter for the county and he works three-day shifts. So if he's on duty on election day, he doesn't have any options to vote in person currently. But under the vote center model, he will be able to go, he'll be able to go two days before he goes on shift and he'll be able to vote in person. Another population is our senior population and those with disabilities that may, um, rely on friends and family to transport them or assist them in the voting booth. On Tuesdays, your daughter might be working when you need that ride. Um, and so it would be much more convenient maybe to go on her day off on Saturday. So this again adds the flexibility and convenience for our, our population. So there are many vote centers, excuse me, many benefits to vote centers. Um, first of all, they're open longer days, more opportunities to vote, four or eleven days. Our second benefit is all vote centers will be located in ADA compliant facilities with sufficient parking and near public transportation. So we'll be able to identify those area, those, those locations, those facilities within the community that are the prime location that fits all that bill. And right now, we have a big problem doing that. Right now, we have fifty-six locations throughout Imperial County. And it's very difficult to find those locations that have sufficient parking, that are near pu- public transportation, that have enough space and are ADA compliant. Very difficult here in Imperial County. So we're running out of spaces, so this kind of checks a box for us. Um, again, voters can go to any vote center and vote their ballot. So that means that if you live in Imperial, but you work in Brawley and it's more convenient for you to vote on your lunch hour in Brawley, you can go to that Brawley vote center and get a ballot with Imperial City Council, with Imperial School District, with Supervisor District Three on it, because we're gonna generate that ballot right there for you. Um, you have the option of doing a paper ballot or our electronic tablets that we have. And those were introduced back in two thousand and twenty-one, so people, our voters that vote in person are familiar with those, the, the equipment there. Um, again, all ballot types are, are available at every vote center. In November, I don't remember, this, this, uh, council didn't have a contest in November, right? Okay, um, there were several contests on the ballot in November that were very close. And I don't know if you were watching the results very closely. After election night, we released our, our results. And then every evening, it's tradition, five o'clock, every evening we release updates, until we get to the provisionals. Because when the provisionals hit, that's after all the vote by mail ballots have been processed, all the vote in person have been processed, we're left with provisionals. And then we don't release any, any results until after all of the provisionals have been tabul- counted and tabulated. That took us two and a half weeks last year, just to do the provisionals, because we had five thousand five hundred of those. We had the same number as Orange County did. Yeah, in Imperial County. And that's mainly because people went to the wrong location or they didn't have their vote by mail ballot that they were surrendering. So by going by vote to vote centers, this is going to reduce, I mean, I, I'm not gonna say eliminate provisional ballots, there will still be some, but it will greatly reduce the amount of provisional ballots. So will allow us to provide those final results much sooner. Um, voters can register and update the registration at every vote center. So we will have technology there, real-time access to voter registration. So one of the security features of that for us is that when voters come in, the election official will be able to look on the tablet, they'll check the, the voter in, that'll be the first step, they'll check the voter in, and they'll be able to identify if that voter has voted or not. So if they have already voted, we can identify that right there in real time. Um, also, we'll be able to suspend vote by mail ballots. So if a voter comes in and forgets to bring that vote by mail ballot that they received at home, we will be able to void that ballot and issue them a new one. So it, it, it eliminates that second ballot out there. That's a great feature for us. We also have what is called Remote Access Vote by Mail, RAVPM. Now, this is not new in California, but it is something that I'm really wanting to promote. Um, RAVPM allows voters to mark their selections using their own compatible technology in the privacy of their own home. So for our voters that may have a disability, um, it provides an opportunity to get their ballot over the internet, mark it using their technology there, and then print it out. Now, let me really say this loudly, this is not internet voting. It is not internet voting. The process goes, the voter would call us or email us, request this service, we would provide them with a link. Then at their home, they would be able to pull up their ballot on the computer, mark it, print it, then put it in an envelope, we, we can provide them an envelope or they can provide it, sign an oath that we provide to them, sign the envelope. So there's all of the provisions right there, the security features right there, and then mail it back to us. And so then, we would verify that that voter is eligible to vote by their signatures, all of the same things that we do with vote by mail, just a little bit different, making it a little bit more easy, um, especially for those voters that may be bedridden. Or, um, we even had an, an elderly couple that had traveled to France last year and didn't get their vote by mail ballot in time before they left unexpectedly. And so they were able to use RAVPM, which was a, a nice feature for them. Um, so to get from traditional polling places to vote centers, we have what we call the Election Administration Plan. It is in draft form right now, it can be viewed on our website in English and Spanish. And it is giving us, that gives us the guidelines to get from one step to the next. How we will get there, how we will do the outreach to communities, um, how we will budget it, how we will operate the facilities, everything is there from start to finish. To get there, we have a series of, of meetings that we have to do. So our first consultation meetings we held in June and July. And they focused on our disabled community, our senior population, and our non-English speaking voters. We had those in June and July and we followed it with a public comment period. So those were required under the election code. What wasn't required was a second round of public meetings. But because this is new to Imperial County, we felt it was necessary to do a traveling workshop. So we have gone to every county, our last workshop is next week in Calapat. In addition, I've scheduled presentations like this at every city council meetings because I wanna take advantage of the viewers that are listening right now. Um, we, we're going to all of the city council meetings, you're my second one. Um, and then it'll be followed by a public hearing, it says August twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, but we just scheduled that at September fourth at three PM at the Board of Supervisors Chambers. A public hearing where we'll go over a presentation similar to this, um, followed by a second public comment period before we submit our plan to the Secretary of State for final approval. So we've been working closely with the Secretary of State's office through this whole process and they are very familiar with what we have and they're very happy with our progress so far. Um, we've received the funding that it's going to take to purchase the new equipment through a grant, so it's not coming out of the County General Fund. And, uh, everything is on target for June primary two thousand and twenty-six. That is when we will unveil our new vote centers. Now, in Imperial, it's looking like the Veterans Hall is the primary location for us, it's right in the center of town. It's right in the center between the houses out by Ayton and the houses out, um, north of here. And so it's kind of centrally located, it fits all of the, of the needs that we have. So that, and the county owns the building, so that's nice. Um, and so that's kind of where we're focused on right now. And with that, I will offer any questions, to answer any questions that you have, any concerns?
I don't have any concerns or questions, I'm just really excited to see this come to fruition. I've always felt like in the voter registrar's office, we've been like so far behind like other counties. Um, and I'm so glad to see that you finally got the support to get this moving forward, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, we're very excited.
May I ask a, a brief question too? Um, in terms of how, a- as you know, our clerk and, um, our, our staff works with you on elections.
Yes.
Is any of that changing for them?
No.
No different filings, great.
No different, no, everything will be the same.
Great.
Sounds wonderful.
Good, if there's no further questions, real quick, I also wanna add something. Um, just to make you all aware, it is ninety-nine point nine percent certain that we will be having a special election November fourth. If you guys have been following that, um, three pieces of legislation have been introduced to the legislature. There's AB, excuse me, ACA eight, which, um, amends the constitution giving the legislature power to draw congressional maps that will be used for the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-eight, and two thousand and thirty elections. Um, there is a key provision in there, um, that says only if Texas, Florida, or another state adopts a new congressional district map. Um, there's also AVA six oh four, which are the maps. And, and that will go into effect if ACA eight is passed. Now, I have looked at the maps, they are available on the Assembly website. Um, Imperial County so far is not going to be affected, we will still have one congressional district. So we are, i- in, in our department, we're kind of happy about that because that means we won't have to redo our maps and all of the stuff that goes along there. And then SB two eighty, which calls for the special election, and most important, allocates money for counties. So we've estimated that this is gonna cost our county about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, um, administer this special election. Um, they're not giving us a whole lot of time. And so, um, if they do pass it, we're thinking maybe tomorrow or Friday, we'll know. Uh, but it only gives us about sixty-eight days to, to run this election, which is not enough time at all. But we're gonna get it done, so.
I have a question, is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars essentially a rough estimate of what it costs to put on any special county-wide election?
Y- yes, well, yes, the, the problem here with this election, it is, it's such a short timeline. And so we know that our vendors are going to, um, charge us extra because it's going to be, it, I mean, our printers are, are definitely freaking out right now. Because, uh, there's only a couple of printers that are, um, that are authorized to print ballots and election material in California, so they will be doing all fifty-eight counties. Yes, yes, and so we know that that cost right there alone and that is our biggest cost, is printing of the ballots and mailing. Yeah. Thank you, okay, all right.
Thank.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, thank you.
Okay, up next, A three, GIS Project Report by Romero Ramos.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, tonight I'll be providing an update on the city's GIS. I'll briefly cover s- the status of key projects, highlight applications that are already supporting staff and the community, and outline strate- the strategic direction we're moving toward. So some of the key projects that we're working on or have com- completed is, uh, the ArcGIS Enterprise. We installed ArcGIS Enterprise across seven different servers, um, for added security. We also installed ArcGIS Monitor, which will help us to monitor our system, making sure that we have a reliable enterprise geo-database. We also installed Arc G S Monitor, which will help us to monitor our system, making sure that we have a reliable enterprise geo database or enterprise G I S system. Uh we still need to transfer data to our enterprise geo database, however, um we're gonna be transferring that data as needed. Uh we want to make sure that we're transferring good quality data and that we're transferring data when it's needed. Because there's certain features or functionality that's available only in Arc G S Enterprise, and so when we need that, we're going to leverage that. Uh we've also implemented a single sign-on, we've integrated that with Arc G S Enterprise for added security. Uh we have, we are planning a citywide rollout of that um after the A M S system, the asset management system is launched. Um and that's to avoid any uh training and support conflicts, uh because it will take some time to make sure people are um get up up and running and up to speed. Uh so the big project that I've been working primarily on um for several months now has been the asset management system. Um so uh originally it was called City Works, now we're actually implementing Trimble Unity Maintain, uh it's just a newer version of City Works. Um so excuse me. Uh so we've gathered detailed requirements from three different departments, parks, public services, and Department of Innovation and Technology. Originally, the scope was to have forty different work orders and inspections. Uh however, we've got eighteen, after detailed requirements gathering, we've had an eighteen hundred percent increase in those requirements. And that just goes to show you how much work the city staff is actually doing, and because that, each of those work orders represents individual workflows that they're doing in each of those departments, so. So we've actually increased from forty to about seven hundred and sixty plus we're uh individual work orders. Um several of these work orders include regulatory uh work orders, meaning they want to have things on recording work orders so that they're not um uh running the risk of 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 getting fines from these regulatory agencies. Also, this council was presented um in a previous council meeting with the needs for additional licensing and devices. Uh so originally in our contract, we had twenty five licenses, however, after our detailed analysis, uh we determined we need a few more. So we're about, we're looking at about thirty five uh licenses, and so we want to make sure people have the licenses so they can do their job and do the do the the work that we're anticipating they're gonna do with the asset management system. So we now have an expected completion of the end of the second quarter. Some of the G S applications that are currently in production, we have uh some some that you've seen before, the street sweeping and the free wifi locations. Uh however, we have some new applications, we have the wastewater infrastructure application, which is an internal application that details our wastewater infrastructure, sewer manholes, sewer, gravity sewer lines, things like that. And we also have a new traffic conditions app, uh which highlights closures, uh road closures, detours and traffic restrictions. And we also have a new pavement conditions dashboard. And this is an interactive dashboard uh that allows us to see the roughness condition, the P C I, and pretty much all the information that was gathered or collected from our consultant uh during the pavement condition survey. Uh we've already started capturing uh the roadway projects, so our Public Services Director, uh we've given him an application, and he's already identified or captured or identified, however you want to put it, uh sixty three different roadway projects that he's completed, or him and his team have completed. Um and we're we plan on expanding that to capture all of the land development projects, C U Ps, all C I Ps, including water, wastewater, stormwater, and park projects, and so that will be a development and C I P dashboard. Uh we also, you know, are working on a an an enhanced pavement management system. Uh that will include a pavement conditions editor, so we can keep track of all of the different, so you know, we had the survey. Now, we're gonna be doing work, we want to make sure that we're maintaining that system and having an up-to-date pavement management uh or pavement conditions. And then with that, we want to publish out a robust uh public-facing dashboard, and yeah, and then also we have a uh working on an enhanced traffic conditions dashboard. So the idea with what we have here on the left in production is uh the philosophy of done is better than perfect, right? So it's not perfect yet, but we do want to work on some enhancements. I've already identified some areas that we can improve the end user experience, and so I'll be working on that. We also have some future applications that we'll be working on, uh economic development, or focusing specifically on economic development, land use, zoning, parks, special districts, and some more operational maps. The cur- the city currently has a G I S web portal that is available on the city's uh website. Uh in that G I S web portal, there are, there's a featured G I S application, which is essentially the newest application that we have uh that's available to the public. It also has a carousel that uh has the most popular G I S applications. And selected applications have a video link that allows users to get a guided tour of a particular application. We also have a G I S help button that persists throughout the G I S web portal, uh that takes users to a frequently asked question section, video tutorials, and printable maps. Here are some screenshots of the different applications that we have, so right in the center, you can see we have a pavement managed, or sorry, pavement conditions dashboards, is an interactive dashboard, and I'd be happy to demo this at the end if anybody's interested. Uh we also have a, on the right, uh Imperial's wastewater infrastructure, you can see all of the manholes in the city or the manholes that we actually have currently up to date. Um shown as in green, and if you look at the bottom left, uh that's a that's a zoomed in on that's zoomed in on that infrastructure map, and you can see that it has a sewer, gravity sewer lines, the manholes with the I D numbers, parcel numbers, and address data as well. And then towards the bottom here, we have the traffic conditions, uh which you can see in blue, that's a detour, and the yellow are showing uh road restrictions, which indicates the current construction that's happening now. And you can see these circles with a r- red X, and those are traffic impacts. That's uh signifying things like intersections closed and other types of impacts, and so we made it where it's versatile, so it can handle a lot of different types of traffic impacts. The departments that we're supporting right now, uh public services, community development, and other departments, so police, fire, parks, D O I T, and in the future, administrative services, I don't see Victor, where's Victor? Oh, there, there you go, okay. Alright, so um, but for public services, uh we help with outlining the detailed G I S requirements for the C C T V R F P. Another big project that we worked on was the asset inventory, so we now have updated sign data throughout the city. Uh also, we've identified all of the A D A ramp locations and all of our sidewalk data, so all of that should be up to date. Uh for commu- community development, we worked hand in hand with the engineers and um Jesus Vegas, this was his project. Uh we helped him with the data preparation, and then of course, we're consuming that data now into our pavement management, I'm sorry, pavement conditions uh dashboard. Also provide critical data for the environmental justice element uh to the consultants, so that they would, they can perform their analysis. And we've also mapped locations for the organic waste monitoring. Some other integrations that we've done besides the Arc G S integration with single sign-on is the AutoCAD for Arc G S. This allows users to in, to work within an environment that they're already comfortable with, many users already like to use AutoCAD. And so they can pull in and consume G I S data directly into an environment that they're used to working with um until they're ready to transition over to an in a G I S application. We also interpr- integrated Niermap with Arc G S Pro, and we have for plans to further integrate with our applications as well. I've drafted a G I S strategy that identifies five strategic uh objectives. And I've also developed a short-term roadmap for for um for G S projects. So in closing, uh G S continues to provide value by delivering foundational projects like enterprise and asset management systems system, putting new applications into production, and supporting departments across the city. We now have a clear strategic direction that positions us to expand these benefits further. Thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions you have.
I love seeing this come to light. It's so, I mean, G I S is such a helpful tool, and when you have somebody like yourself that can build the infrastructure, you know, the backend infrastructure behind it to make it usable for everybody in the city, it's such a great investment, so.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Do we have any kind of tutorial video or anything posted for the public on how to use this?
Yes. Yes, I do, if you go to the city's website, and actually, I don't know, can I switch over? I have um in the G S web portal, we do have a section for G I S help, and there's video tutorials
Okay.
For the overall applications that pretty much applies to all applications, and then we also have a section that, or certain select applications have specific videos. So I don't know if we'll put videos for every single one, because once you kind of learn one, they're pretty intuitive, so so we'll just see how that goes, and we'll see, you know, what kind of feedback we get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's pretty, like the street sweeping, I put in my address, and it tells you, okay, your days is gonna be on this, like the wifi on there, you're able to see. I see that you're already preemptively putting applications and data for land development, open data, government, and
Yes, yes, sorry. Yes, exactly, that, we have um, we have created sections, and these need to be filled in. Like, once we start getting these applications and we can publish them out to the public, then they'll start going into, you know, parks and recreation, community engagement, and things like that, so. And then um I'll just briefly show you one of these applications. So this is a pavement conditions dashboard. So this da- dashboard is interactive, is this touchscreen? So this is an interactive dashboard, sorry, I'm using my fingers here, it's gonna act a little funky, but you can see, uh we have a pie chart over here on the right-hand side, and if I click on the poor conditions, if I click on that port, it just isolates and filters out just the poor, um the the pay, the the roadway projects that have, sorry, the roads that are in poor condition. And the same thing, I can do that with uh very poor conditions. And then we superimpose the layer for the projects that David, um sorry, the Public Services Director is working on. And it actually shows a correlation that these projects are in li- are in alignment with um the the projects that he chose.
So so this map, Romero, this this map is from two thousand and three, two thousand and four, so it was prior to the projects that we did last year.
No, I'm sorry, this is two thousand and fourteen, this is two thousand and twenty four data.
So it was before the projects that we did as of last year, so you'll see red there, that does, that means that that some of those we already addressed.
Yes.
But, so what we've, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but um if, so what we're pl- we hope to do is to show like a twenty twenty four map of this, and then a twenty twenty five map, which will show the differences as the years go on.
I was noticing fourteenth in the area of C was still showing it as poor, I'm like, it's, fourteenth isn't poor anymore.
Map, because I'm on here.
Oh, this one is, sorry, this one is not public, this is internal only, yes, so not a, not everything is. Yeah, and that's what uh uh what I was mentioning before, is that we're going, you know, the idea was get something, you know, get the data in the hands of the users. Uh but, you know, it's like I said, done is better than perfect at this point, but we are going to make some enhancements, and so with that, those enhancements, we don't want to start putting data out that is not correct, and so that's why we're doing that enhancement to, uh we're gonna provide uh public services and 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 community development, uh an application where they can go in and edit the data, and they can update um those those conditions. So then it would reflect these, those changes, so like you said, something that looks red right now, once that's updated, it won't be red anymore.
Glad to see this, and glad that we have something nice that we can utilize.
This is just the beginning. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be moving on. B, consent agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other persons request that any item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Um we are actually adding C two to the bundle here.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I got a motion in a second. Vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright, thank you. C, action item, discussion actions. C one, designation of a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo October eighth through tenth, presenter, Mr. Dennis Morita.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, a- as you all know, the annual uh California Cities Conference is coming up in October. One of the activities that takes place is consideration of various resolutions, and we have the opportunity to appoint a delegate to uh vote, and as indicated in the item, you can also appoint two alternate delegates.
Alrighty.
So we would recommend that uh if you have volunteers, that's great.
Yes, yes, we have volunteers, so we're ready.
I'll make a, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Idaho Basin Martinez as del- wait, no. As delegate and then alternate, is that how you wanted to do it?
Second.
Go ahead. Works for me.
Stacy.
It's done.
One motion.
One motion, second. And then Roberts the third.
Yes. I make a, okay, let me recheck. I make a motion to have Idaho Basin, Councilmember Idaho Basin Martinez as the primary voting delegate and Stacy Mendoza and Robert Alparano as the two alternates, being Steph- Stacy preferably be number one and Robert number two.
Alrighty. I would second that. I got a motion in a second. Did the city clerk get all that? Get a roundabout.
Sure did get that, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Next up, C three, adopter resolution number twenty twenty five dash forty five. Approving the twenty twenty five service area plan as recommend- recommended by the Planning Commission. By Yvonne Cordero, planner.
Good afternoon again. Um one thing I failed to mention on the invitation for the food banks event, there will be a taco cart, and there will be giveaways, so. Okay, so now I'm here to present um the City of Imperial's twenty twenty five service area plan. It's important to note, um as we go through the slides, that this document was formulated at a time in the past, so the, some of the information is dated information, so that's important to note. Also, um this three hundred plus page document has been condensed into just nine slides.
Even better.
You know, Yvonne, I was actually wondering that, if it was gonna be the whole presentation, the last time I
No, no, just summarizing the points. Next slide. Okay, the twenty twenty five service area plan covers a twenty-year planning horizon through twenty forty five and provides a comprehensive evaluation of the City of Imperial's capacity to serve existing development and accommodate future growth within both the city limits and broader sphere of influence. The city update of the service area plan also satisfies the requirements of the Cortez-Knox-Hetzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of two thousand to establish procedures for local government changes in California focusing on orderly growth and efficient provisions of services. The Act guidelines are used by LAFCO when reviewing proposals involving annexations, boundary changes to ensure solid service planning and municipal growth management responsibilities. And it's important to mention, um LAFCO currently has two applications for annexations, and we just received um an inquiry about another annexation in our department. Next slide. During the S A P Service Area Plan, twenty-year planning pro- period, the city's population is projected to double from our current population of twenty two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three to forty three thousand sixty-one in twenty forty-five, with a total build-out of seventy thousand two hundred and twenty-four residents. Our sphere of in- influence includes um fourteen proposed annexation areas spanned over a twenty-year horizon. The sphere of influence includes fourteen areas that are phased over twenty years, and this plan intends to guide that growth responsibly. Next slide. The plan covers eight major service areas, as you can see, administrative facilities, drainage, police and fire, library, parks, our circulation of roads and streets, water, and wastewater. Each section includes current capacity, future demand, and what is needed as the city expands or mitig- mitigation Or mitig- mitigation measures based on LAVCO's performance standards. Next slide. The service area plan's key infrastructure findings include that. As we all know, there is a shortfall of eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four square feet in administrative spaces. At the time that a data collection for this report was done. The police department had a four officer shortfall with three thousand three hundred twenty-two square fe- square feet. Of, of a deficit for the facility. Parklands had a five acre current shortfall and a hundred and twenty-nine point two acres. Needed of park space at full build-out. The wastewater treatment plant is expected to reach capacity by twenty forty-five, indicating there is a need for expansion. And while the water supply is adequate for now, upgrades will be necessary as growth occurs. These short, shortfalls will only expand as new development occurs, so phased investments and coordination will be critical. The financial snapshot was the audit of twenty fiscal year fis- next slide, sorry. The audit year of fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. You can see the general fund balance had twenty, ten point three million, the water fund net position twelve point seven million. The sewer fund net position fifteen point eight million, utility and cash investments had. Twenty-nine point ni- twenty-two point nine million, net pension liability was five point seven million. And the city is carrying twenty-eight point nine million in utility-related bonded debt. And while the debt is currently high, the city is prepared for expansion. Next slide. The service area plan outlines a city's solid financial foundation and the funding mechanisms the city will need to expand by utilizing impact fees. CFDs, user rates, and grants. LAVCO's recommendation is to include a detailed fiscal impact. And financing plan to fund infrastructure in all proposed annexations. Next slide. After LAVCO conducted an in-depth review of the service area plan, it held a public meeting on June twenty-six. Twenty twenty-five to approve the service area plan. LAVCO commissioners were united in their assessment that the submitted service area plan is well structured and addressed all required elements. By approving the service area plan, LAVCO accepted the determinations for the Cortez-Knox-Hetzberg Act. Reaffirmed the existence sphere of influence and declared that the document was exempt from further SEQA review. Next slide. LAVCO's final recommendations emphasize that any future annexations be conditioned. On demonstrating service capacity and fiscal sustainability and noted that while key issues such as the city's budget. Remain transparent, efforts to engage the public are encouraged. And that the city should incorporate public-facing dashboards and satisf- satisfaction surveys. As there is always room to improve and ensure residents remain informed as the city. And ensure the city is responsive as it grows. Imperial Planning Commission, along with staff, recommend the adoption of the twenty twenty-five service area plan. By adopting resolution twenty twenty-five forty-five. And I'll stand for any questions.
If, if I may add, I, I know that we got to review several service, uh, area plans like that, and after reviewing. Imperials, it was actually easy to read, information was good, so appreciate all the hard work that was put into it.
Yes, the depart- all the departments, other than the city worked together to provide this document.
With that, I, there is no further questions, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash four five.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. See no more comments? Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Dennis, when you're gonna build a new city hall? The city hall was like. Yeah, but they'll still be under. One day.
Someday.
We ain't discussing that now. Let's move on, two G reports, um, Mr. Moore.
Um, there's still a lot of construction going on south of Berione, but we're expected to complete that. Um, by the week of September twenty-second. You know, keep an eye on the traffic control, uh, will be done pretty soon.
Now, this eighty-six or what is it?
It's, I'm sorry, it's highway eighty-six, yes, it is south of Berione, so there's a lot of work.
And then, uh, when's it gonna be supposed to be done, in the plans?
Just, yep, um, completed after that, uh, let's say thirty more days, so we'll be completing the, the. Left-trom pockets and the installation of the flashing beacon, and then, uh, let's say thirty more days for to complete the, um. The striping as well.
Oh, yeah, welcome change, but very much a change for people to use the term pocket. Go into the median still.
I just have a, do you know when they're gonna open up where you can cross, or until the construction's done?
Uh, it's, uh, the week of September twenty-second, that's, that's the target date. We're pushing, pushing very hard, but there's, there's been some. Um, hiccups here and there because of boring and then the installation of the flashing beacon, but.
Okay, no, I just get asked, so they're like, when can I cross? Six, I can't get into.
Because last time they opened it up a little bit, they cleaned it up and.
This was a little bit more complicated than the northern part of Berione, but we'll get there.
Good work, though.
Alright. Mister Dale.
Hmm, at the risk of sounding like a hypocrite, um. I, I'd like to say basically that, um. Isn't it cool that we can choose to be grateful about at least one thing per day?
Absolutely.
And when you're grateful, it's impossible to be angry. I, I'm grateful for all our staff that is on boots on the ground during the summertime, outside, working. Keeping the city going from parks, public services, police department. Everybody that works outside during the summertime, super grateful for them. I also wanna say that I'm becoming a huge fan of this GIS program, um, we're working closely with, um, uh, our GIS manager. Um, there's gonna be some things that roll out, he, he went over some of those things, uh, briefly that, you know, that it's gonna be able to inform. The public on things that we're doing, and so they won't, they won't, they'll, they'll be more informed, for example. We briefly talked about our CIP projects, so not only the projects that we have been, have been completed, but we're gonna be showing. Projects that we will be working on in the future, so they'll be more informed, and so I think it's really cool. Where, um, we implemented our sidewalk survey for grid number one, that's already starting, that's a GIS program as well, as you saw. So we'll, we'll know, um, exactly where the sidewalk areas that need to be replaced are replaced and repaired. We already are aware of a number of areas that have been, um, identified, so that's already happening. I'm, 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 I'm thinking it's kinda cool that, um, we're seeing a lot of the city sign. It, it's becoming an icon of the city, so whenever you see proposals, uh, our service area plan, you see the city sign there, so I think that's pretty cool too. And if you have any questions for public services, I'm more than happy to, oh, I did wanna, I do wanna, um, inform you. Uh, there, we have a, our, we started our manhole pro- uh, rehabilitation project. It started on First Street and Imperial, you're probably aware, so, uh, that was a brick manhole that we determined that it would be better to replace. The contractor started to excavate that manhole and, um, we found a, uh, an old water line that was very near to the manhole. Um, it got nicked, we repaired it, we put a temporary fix on it, um, and we determined that that water line had to be re-. Replaced and re- and relocated because it was too close to the sewer line. We also found another brick manhole that was buried under the asphalt, um, it was basically just a cleanout, but it was another brick structure. That will be removed, so it was a good thing that we determined to replace this thing because we found all kinds of other issues. Um, and so I think the water line is almost being, uh, re- replaced right now, so we should hopefully have that open, reopen in the next. Couple of days, I'm hoping, so that, just, just to be aware of what's going on right there, so the, the water line will probably be shut down again temporarily. When we connect the new line, uh, I believe we're gonna be also installing a new fire hydrant in the corner of that, because there's no fire hydrants in, in that near. Near that area, so we'll, we might as well put a fire hydrant while we're at, we're at it, so, so, so we're, we're working hard on that. Um, the CCTV project, which is connected to GIS as well. That will, um, we just received some submittals, so we'll be reviewing those, and hopefully that project will start in. October slash November, and then when we'll get all the information about our collection system, that will be put back into our GIS system. And then we'll have a more accurate, uh, map, cause the map that, uh, we have now is from two thousand and eight, and so we've. Obviously expanded it quite a bit, and, and we wanna know exactly what's going on in our, in our system. We anticipate that, um, that Old Town Imperial will show a number of, of issues that we'll have to start to address. So, um, I know we have a lot of money in the accounts, but we're probably gonna have to start working on some sewer line replacements in the Old Town areas, just FYI.
Mister David, um, you said that there was a break, um, obviously the maps were originally done, how long ago? I mean, you said two thousand and eight, but I mean, our city's old, so.
Those wa- I will, I will, well, I will say that those water lines are probably, they're still clay, they're clay pipes. And they're trans- transient pipes, so they're probably like a hundred fifty, a hundred years old, and so maps are. Are hardly existent, um, we, we thought the line was eight feet different where, from where it actually was, um, and so. Um, it needed to be re- relocated anyways, um, too close to sewer, we need some separation, and so.
As we go along manhole, uh, manhole or how you guys do it, you, you guys are updating the maps to say, okay. Sewer's here now, water's here now, so that in.
Yep.
Five years from now or ten, when somebody goes digging, it's not gonna be a problem, hopefully.
So as we move along, I'm updating the, the, our water distribution map, which was kind of outdated, so I'm, I'm working on that every, as we go along. And, um, and getting more accurate maps, which we get also work with GIS, so. There's a lot of cooperation between our, our departments and, and as, like I said, as we move forward, there's gonna be a lot of, um. Lot of benefits I, I can see from the GIS applications.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mister Lopez.
So there's a few things I wanted to bring up, uh, first and foremost, I do wanna echo what, uh. David said about the staff, it is extremely hot out there, they're out there day in and day out. Um, working hard, um, so I do appreciate a- all the hard work they do. Um, so if you see him out there and, uh, you happen to pass by, you have some Gatorade or something, I would definitely. Stop by and, 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 uh, say hello. Um, the next thing being, um, we have, uh, you know, on the agenda, uh, we had that, uh, Irving project. Public services will be striping that, uh, here soon, uh, in thermoplastic and all the good stuff that, uh, we can afford. That the grant allowed us to do, um, the Sky Ranch expansion of the park. Uh, they'll be erecting, uh, overhead shade, shade structures in the next few days, solar lighting, uh, posts will be going up. That project is expected to be completed in the next few weeks as well. Uh, the next week's, uh, schedules will be the installation of the pouring place rubber surfacing. Which is probably the more, one of the more expensive components of that project, so. The, not to add to the, uh, traffic that already is a mess right now, because of all the things they're doing, I mean. With, uh, making things new and expanding different things causes a little bit of a disturbance, but. Will be also, uh, in the Imperial Avenue corridor, uh, we've identified about a half a dozen or more, uh, planners. Uh, those concrete planners that we'll be replacing, we have a recruited volunteer from our community, that will be supervising that for us. Mister Johnny, Johnny Wheels, John Sample will be, uh, giving the guys hell, uh, on, uh, as they're going through that. Uh, uh, I'mma be having fun with that, so. The next few things are, uh, as we close these other projects out. Uh, we will be shifting gears into the other things we're doing, uh, towards the end of this year until, until next year. One of the things being is, I don't know if Dennis has had a chance to mention to you guys, that I will need at least one and an alternate to. Form and be on part of a committee that we're doing for the regional park side, uh, so if you guys have that in mind. I'll be coming with that request of that, those appointments to be, uh, in the process with all of the talented people that are in the room. Uh, it will be all, all team, uh, all hands-on, uh, process, first, you know, to get, uh. The physi- feasibility, sustainability, uh, portion of it, uh, David Dale will be, uh, helping us out with, uh, designing, engineering. Uh, side of it too, so we can save some money there, so, uh, we, we, we would like to have a few of you on there to be informed throughout the process. Uh, and then, um, you know, we have been notified that, uh, we have another, uh, fifty percent match. Award through CPRS, this will help us, uh, pay for, uh, fifty percent of the amenities we're gonna rehab at Eager Park for the playground. So whatever we purchase will be fifty percent, so we can really stretch our dollars out. Really make something, uh, uh, special happen here at our, uh, Central Hub, uh, location. So I'm excited about that, to get that going, so we were notified about, uh, a few weeks ago that we, we were selected for that match, so. Yes, uh, that, that, all good things coming our way, there's a lot of work still to be done, so. Um, you know, uh, we're excited about what the next few years is gonna bring for parks.
Speaking of Eager Park, how's the splash pad holding up?
It's flat, well.
Sorry. I would say it's due for an upgrade.
It's so, it's, so it's due for an upgrade, the only, the only thing is that we've, we've been lucky enough for that thing to last, you know, I would say about fifteen years now. Uh, two thousand and fif- uh.
It's been a while, yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen-ish, uh, we've been lucky, the pump systems have held in place, we're grandfathered and there's certain rules, so. Public health, uh, uh, gives us some slack on that, uh, we don't have UV and other systems that we should have. Uh, as far as rehab of it, you're absolutely right, it does need it, so those are things we're actively looking for grants for. To, uh, cause it has a heavy price tag, we're talking, uh, the last time I checked, uh, somewhere in the million-dollar range. Uh, so, um, we would like to, uh, rehab right now, we're, uh, changing things out as we need. Uh, Band-Aid fixes, but, uh, eventually we will have to, I mean, I, it's due for a facelift. So, um, you know, one point two to one point five is the last, and this is just the amenities in, under the shade. Uh, upgrading of pump systems and different things is probably gonna have another price tag on that. So, uh, uh, we're looking for any funding sources we can get our hands on to, to give that a facelift, cause it is a very popular thing.
But is, is it holding up as far as this, through the summer, is the.
It's absolutely operational, um, we, we, uh, periodically get inspected randomly by the public health department, we're all good, we're all good. Uh, yeah, so, no problem, um.
They let, they let everybody know on Facebook when it's down.
Yeah, yeah, so, so if you, i- you're exactly right, so when it is down, it's, it's, it's a huge thing, because we get visitors from. Even though brawling in certain cities already have splash, that we do, we get visitors from all over. So, um, we're keeping it alive, uh, we're doing good so far, but in the next few years, we gotta really look at. That infrastructure and, and, uh, and really giving it some, uh, some love.
Thank you.
Did you say we're. Gonna add a pool for the city?
You're gonna build it, thanks Jake.
We are.
That, 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 so that is one of the amenities that was voted on in the survey, was a, you know, obviously an indoor space with an indoor pool. And all the fancy things, that, and all the millions of dollars that that brings, uh, now that you brought.
What does it need to be indoor for, I'm just curious?
They just, uh, it says swimming pool, uh, it doesn't need to be indoor, most of them are outside of the rec center, kind of.
Oh, yeah.
You check in, you get the pass to come into the pool, um, get a little sun, but, uh. Now that the mayor mentioned the pool, I wanna thank everybody for showing up to the end of summer bash, including Mayor and a few council members. Uh, if you were, if you look closely, uh, we had Mayor in there with his water wings, uh, in the pool amongst the, amongst the folks. So, uh.
I was looking for the diving boards.
Yeah, we had the IPOA there, uh, they gave away some goodies and some prizes and some free stuff. So, um, we had so many people in attendance, we, we had to turn some away because the pool's not. Uh, big enough to hold that many people, so we had about two hundred in the pool. Uh, and it's, uh, don't tell the school district, but not, doesn't allow for two hundred. So we, we had to do what we had to do to keep people happy, so safely, right, so, um. We, we, uh, we had a successful turnout, as hot as it was, cause it was pretty, it was pretty humid and toasty that day, so. I wanna thank everybody that showed up, including you guys.
Alright, thank you. Mister Estrada, how's things going over there?
It's going great, thank you for, for asking, um, Mister Mayor and council members. I don't know if I mentioned, uh, but last, uh, August fourth. We started our standby, uh, pilot program, so it means we have a technician, uh, available after business hour. Not only to monitor our infrastructure, but also in. Not only to monitor our infrastructure, but also in case of a another department needs tech support, mainly water and wastewater and why not to police. Regarding the projects that were approved by by council, uh there was a server around ninety uh thousand dollars approved. We received a server and we are estimating eight um eight weeks to complete the implementation. So far, we have been uh ordered twenty computers, so we are working on refreshing those workstations um as needed. We also received uh forty five cameras and switches uh for our new M B R system for city and wastewater plant, um we're still waiting on the servers, but cameras and switches are here. And so as soon as they are here, we're gonna start uh putting cameras all around. Um we also, um if everything goes fine uh on next week on the twenty eighth, we are planning to le- um to release our E um R F P for the website and the agenda management. So we are just um waiting on few things, but that's also ready to go. Lastly, I just wanna say thank you about the your vision, because think uh to cancel, we were able to launch the G I S uh um program project. I remember our first conversations was a little uncertain what's uh in front of us. But I think is uh we just need a little more time to complete the what we started and Ramiro has been doing a really good uh job, but definitely without council vision, this is not really possible, so thank you very much.
So just one really quick thing, the last council meeting, we approved the purchase of a radar trailer that has been received and deployed already, primarily to the school areas to give people an indication of what their speeds are. There have been a couple of questions on whether or not it has a license plate reader, which it does not. It is strictly for data aggregation and speed information, so offer those assurances to the public. And I kinda wanna pile on to the sentiment about working in the summertime um with a blue uniform that's made out of wool or polyester and a bulletproof vest. It's it could be a make for a pretty miserable day, I'm almost certain I died a number of times, but it was awful. Um just to the men and women that actually do this in the summertime, uh it's it's it their efforts are appreciated, so I just kinda wanna pile on that.
Can we congratulate your officer?
Of the year?
Of the year?
So we certainly can, um so it it this is the it the officer of your program has been non-existent for some time. Um and it was more informal in years past, and we've been working as a group for the command staff and supervision to develop and implement a true officer of your program. So this morning at our supervisors' meeting, we read out that full description for each nominee. And then the final nominee was our officer of the year, and that was Officer Carmen Fiero. And it's it's a it's a recognition that was absolutely earned and not given.
I'd like to see her recognized here if we could.
We certainly could do that.
Is this just str- was that strictly through Imperial Police Department? I remember that the Elks used to do like a countywide officer of the year, and each department would nominate their officer of the year for that program. Is this completely separate from?
So the way that the Alex used to do it is that the of the agencies themselves would have their nominees and then they would invite them to attend the dinner in recognition. Um but with the departure of some of their their hi- their hierarchy, that's that's gone away. They are planning to do something similar for the nine eleven stair climb uh group in October, they're gonna have a gala, which they'll recognize the local law enforcement um nominees for officers of the year, and so Carmen's already been warned about that. Um but it 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 for us this morning, it was a it was a really proud moment to implement a program that came up organically by simple questions. And then the supervisors did the the work and the justification to to implement a program that people can appreciate.
Thank you very much. Chief Lancer?
Good evening, good evening, uh so the R O eight program is up and running officially the first of August. Um we did what we call the soft launch a couple of weeks before that, um just trying some things out. Uh we've running into some issues as expected with communications, um because we have different dispatch centers. Uh we should have one regional dispatch center in a county of our population, but we don't. We have to soapbox now. So we're running into problems and delays, uh however, uh we we are working on solutions and um so those are are gonna be implemented soon to help facilitate the dispatchers, help them be able to to do their part, um um you know, without uh forgetting or stressing or in case there's a a newer dispatcher or sometimes a police officer has to fill in because the dispatcher uh positions uh sometimes are uh unfilled. And so the police officers have to fill in and they can have a cheat sheet, so they can they'll know, you know, what they need to do when a certain type of call comes in. So but uh the the crews are working well together, um we haven't had a fully involved structure uh yet, but we've had several uh where the crews arrive together and uh no major problems at the scenes.
Thank you.
I think you need to pile on to everybody's comments, we have a lot of crews out in the summer heat working. In front of a fire.
And go into a burning building.
Bulletproof vest. Three layers and then go into the burning building.
I'll reserve cover for later.
Ms. Diana?
Uh just a just a quick comment, um by next week, we're gonna be wrapping up numbers for fiscal year twenty five. We're still receiving some invoices for um and we appreciate assistance from all departments, they have been diligent with their work. So we're gonna be wrapping up the numbers for uh revenues and expenditures, and we are bringing back the final numbers by probably the second meeting on September.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kristen?
So I'd just like to introduce one new hire, uh we have Luis Lopez, a police officer for the police department, uh started with us this week, so I were excited to have him on board, and then just a quick happy birthday to Christina, our city clerk for Monday's birthday. And Mr. David Dale's joining us tonight, so happy birthday.
All right, Mr. Garcia?
Uh yeah, the city manager's office has had a, we had a earlier meeting with the state senator Padilla's office, his staff. Um just some general conversation on our, you know, our needs and projects and how the senator might be able to support us. And she know always important to keep those communications and relationships active. Um we also uh had some meetings with the Legacy Medical Group on some of their projects, specifically the Imperial Manor and potential expansion of that project, as well as participating in a roundtable on some of their other projects in other cities. And we'll definitely be bringing more information as those progress or not.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Marita?
Uh yeah, Mr. Mayor, nothing additional for me.
Your staff took care of it for you. That's a boy. All right.
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Um this week, I was this past weekend, I was able to attend the the pool at party, the in December pool party, and as always, the staff did an amazing job. Everybody out there very friendly and trying to get everybody involved and and making sure everybody was safe and having a good time. And so thank you to your staff, Tony, and and the police department for the all the the barbecuing and the the dunk. Thank you to our mayor and council member for voluntolding to be there and and being dunked in there. Uh we had some, there was some issues with the the dunk tape at some point, and Robert was very patiently sitting up there waiting for it to fall and with this like this tense, it's gonna happen any second now. It was a good time, it was it was nice out there, warm, but it was nice. And I think other than, again, I was gonna say happy birthday, but I think that got covered, so that's it.
All right, thank you.
I apologize, I was not able to attend, twenty five year old who needed a root canal in San Diego. Yeah, that was fun, that grows my pocketbook too, but um I heard it was a great event, thank you for that, and thank you to the the police association for providing all the the yummies. Um everybody's doing a great job, things break, it's being fixed, I appreciate that. Our city's so old, oh my gosh, I can't imagine when you, it's like Pandora's box, I bet every time you guys lift a manhole or something. Um again, you guys are out there every day, night sometimes, and it's hotter than you know what outside, so thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys do an amazing job, all of you.
All righty.
I'm nothing to report, I was on vacation, so no. But the kids are back in school now, so. Back to work.
I just same thing like everybody else saying, uh that end of Summer Bash was nice to see a lot of people. Um vendors that we had there, you know, I P D was there, I P O A with giving out hot dogs, I think they ran out. Everything ran out, so it was it was a good event, um yes, little technical difficulties there, but uh finally got it going, the water was hot. It felt like soup. But you know, needless to say, later on, the breeze came by and you were wet, so it was actually pretty cool. Um and once again, uh congratulations to Officer Fiero. Um and to echo on that, the nine eleven stair climb committee decided to revisit that and bring it back. And so instead of calling it a fireball, we're actually calling it a public safety ball, which we're incorporating all public safety in Imperial County uh from uh law, fire and E M S. And there'll be different categories, so it won't be a city trying to compete with the state or fed, it'll be on the city level. And so we got some tricks up our sleeve, I think there's gonna be some great recognitions, so we definitely look forward to seeing, you know, as. Yes, it is October fourth, and so tickets are on sale. Um we're hoping that we can, you know, get a lot of support, it is October fourth. Uh we can get a lot of support for our staff, our city, um for those that are being recognized. We're putting a lot into it and we hope that it's, you know, it's a good turnout for those that, you know, take care of us and every single day. Um the construction that we have going on, I I know it's hard, thank you to all the staff, all the workers that we have out there, our contractors, I know it's tough, but you know you gotta keep moving. And uh my last point is, I I got a little buzz today to make sure that we could wish Mr. Dale a happy birthday. And they said we wanna make sure we see him blush. You know, find find a way to do it, I said, I'll find a way, I think I'll get him to Denny's and order off the back of the menu now, so. So happy birthday.
Thanks. All right. Nothing at all? All right. Welcome to the party, all right, adjourn the part meeting till September third, twenty twenty five.